I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whoever's first to call, roll.
Rogers?
Here.
Gordon?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Poskett?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
Boy.
Here.
That's not real.
All right, move to had number two, public comments, all questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Speaker will be given three minutes to comment on a topic, on agenda items only. Speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. If you have something, please come to the mic. Who would please state your name for the report?
Judy Kents.
I don't know if you're on or not. Is he there? All right, I guess you have to speak more closer.
Since Count Cale is on the agenda, I'm not sure whether I can do this or not, but I wanted to ask about the fourth meeting that Governor Quinn was giving.
That's not on the agenda. The grant on the agenda, that's not.
But I count Cale on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. All right, see anyone else? There, I have another place. All right, see anyone else? We'll move to reports of officers. Got some mayor's report. First of all, I'd like to, I believe the report, so let's put this, first of all, I wish everyone a happy New Year. I hope everyone had a great holiday. So, I'd like to thank everyone who came out this last Saturday to the Meet the Mayor. And just so everyone knows, the next Meet the Mayor, it's going to be a dreamer's sweetheart. It's on February the fourteenth at the Village Hall. So, they're from nine o'clock to eleven o'clock. We had a great turnout this last Saturday. Had some great questions. We're getting those questions typed up. Putting some of my girls to work. So, I'll make those questions typed up along with the answers. There's a couple of questions we weren't able to answer, so we're going out and getting those answers. And then we'll get to get those posted, so we can make sure you're giving the right information. We made the announcement last week, but not last Saturday, it's Saturday prior. Trustee Hostin and I in Oak Park. And the governor made an announcement for two, $105,000 for a Osland grant that was awarded to Rogers Saw Village for our parks. And we showed at one of the meetings the grant that we applied for. But that includes everything from a quarter mile walking path, new soccer field, updating all of our current baseball fields, new dugouts, new ADA walking paths, parking lot for people to do to arrive there, energy efficient lighting, new signage, and new playground equipment for that area. So, we were able to get that. Over the holidays, we initiated a new committee, and it's been ran by trustee Myers. I appreciate him for taking up this, the new SOCCO, which is that recovery committee. And the committee consists of people from administration, our attorneys, we've got someone from the board, there's Daryl from IT, and we've got a resident, I think, that's going to be on there. So, again, it's got a good amount of people on this. We've been looking at going after recovery debt at SoC. We've got, there are, SOCCO is coming out. Just received the award for the $200,000 for CDU, and we're returning over to June. And for the streets, you can see inside SOCCO, I have a mayor's report, so those streets that will be redone this year is 216th Street, Constance Avenue, 215th Street, 223rd Place, and 216th Court. So, we'll get some good work done there. Also, I'd like to add an appointment for the police and fire pension board. I'd like to appoint Lynn Bishop. I'd ask for a motion to accept Lynn Bishop for the police and fire pension board. Your motion to approve. So, I will set that one for second. Any questions or comments? Not, I'd ask, who's heard, please call, roll?
Rogers?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Poskett?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
All right, I do. Motion carries, I ask Bill, if you would come forward. This one.
Hi. Lynn Bishop, as a member of the police and fire pension board of the Rogers Saw Village, we proudly welcome her to the floor. Of course, and it's obvious where. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of the Village. And I will pay full discharge. To lose the officer, the police and fire pension board manager, at the border, according to the best management.
I'd like to thank Bill for taking on this responsibility. So, tonight, as the old saying is, you swore swan, tomorrow you swan it. So. All right, second item here is the reappointment to Human Relations Commission, and Steve Shuckus. And in our committee, it's, just informing the board, I'd ask Steve if you could come forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I, Steve Shuckus, if I could point it out. Human Relations Commission, which is the Saw Village, has a role, who can look for us and who sounds, that I was supporting, Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of the Village, and I will pay full discharge, to lose the officer, Human Relations Commission, according to best management.
I'd say both, with Bill and Steve. It's a lot of volunteers in our community as well. And then, if anyone's interested, I think we have another seat open on the Human Relations Commission. So, if anyone's interested in that, if you would send a letter, you drop it up front, front line, or you can try to send to the first office, and then go through that, and try and make, hopefully, another recommendation soon. All right, as I said, move to Moskowitz instead of this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year, everybody. Glad to see everybody here tonight. Can you hear me? No, not far. Yeah. First of all, I know it's been a while since the last time we all had together, but I want to thank everybody for coming out for the Heroes Scopely War. It was the last minute event that we decided to push together through the wonderful, wonderful, wonderful volunteers that we have, and all the contributors that made such a great event. I want to personally say thank you very much. For Terry's and Blue Team at Walgreens, Saw Village Walgreens, we're supplying so many toys. Every child that left here that night loved a toy. To Robinson Engineering, Holson and Stirk, DP Partners, the Baton, the other side, Henry McKenna, I say thank you very much for the donations sent to supplement food and toys for that event, and cocoa, and cookies for that event. Minority Auto, Hannah and Adam's Daughter, fifteen bags of canned goods, and Santa, who is helping out and making the event even more special. Thank you all very much, it was a great event. The problem that we have in Saw Village, and we've said it over and over again, is the lack of communication. We've done just about everything we can to try to reach out, so people understand exactly what's going on, the events that are happening in the village. Some events get broadcast, but none of the others. I did put a bridging, the gap survey, on page seven of SOCCO, and SOCCO is available on the back table. SOCCO is also available on the website, www.sawvillage.org. I'm really interested in knowing how many people are aware that SOCCO still does get printed. I know it doesn't get distributed to the homes, which is unfortunate, but due to budget cuts several years ago, it's now placed on the website, available in the Village Hall, available in the library, and obviously available, if you need to, you can email me, I'll make sure you get copy. Are you aware of the Village website, and the information that's available on the website? Are you aware of Saw Village official information Facebook page? Are you aware of the official Saw Village email alerts? If you are aware of them, do you use them? And if so, how often? And what information would you like to see at each of those venues? I'd like to make this a year of communication. I'd like to reach out to the residents, it's funny, as I might say to some people, I'd like to reach out to the residents and say, what, how would you like to see information communicated? What would you like to see communicated? So, this is the beginning. Happy New Year. Let's see what we can do to make this a year of communication. If you have any questions, my door is always open, and you can call me at any time. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Move to Lieutenant Chair, Mr. Ternick.
Okay, I'd like to give a project summary report on the progress of Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project, kind of start to finish to where we are today. Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project involves the following: installation of air strippers to remove nitrofluoride from groundwater, installation of iron filters to remove iron and manganese from groundwater, which is water softening, installation of standby power generators to provide backup power for the treatment plants, upgrading the supervisory data control and data acquisition system, building improvements, including piping replacements, electrical improvements, roof replacements, HBC replacements, et cetera, and site improvements, including backwash tank improvements, paving, fencing, seating, et cetera. Construction started in March of 2014, and the initial construction efforts involved restoring well three to operation first to provide water in sufficient quantity to the village. Well three went back online last month. Construction is now focused on water treatment plant one, which is well one and two. And that involves new piping, which has been installed. A new air stripper is being brought online. The old iron removal filter will be demolished soon, and the new filter will be installed. And the improvements to wells one and two should be substantially completed by this spring. The entire project will be completed by May. Saw Village is incomplete compliance with the consent order established by the IATA and the Attorney General's Office, and the IATA provided a low interest, $4.9 million loan for engineering and construction project. Governor then announced that Saw Village would receive a grant for the entire loan allowance, so the village will not have to pay any cost for the project. As always, I would keep the board up to date as the project progresses to completion. I conclude by the word, Mr. Mayor.
Move to report to trustees and board committees, Parks and Parks Committee, trustee Hostin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish everybody a Happy New Year, and we have things coming up for the Parks and Rec. We have our last basketball timeout, will be January 23rd to 24th, 23rd is Friday, it'll be five to seven, and then Saturday, the 24th, from noon to two. Also, we had a Parks and Rec board meeting, our regular meeting, with first Thursday of August, it's happening in New Year, so 158, we had a snowstorm, so we rescheduled it now for 15th, weather committee. Chat show, we're scheduling a chat show, or looking for people who would like to participate. That will be March 14th, starting at 9:00 a.m. I'm also trying to form a sports group to help run the baseball, soccer programs for outdoor, anybody interested in helping run sports programs for outdoor sports, please contact me.
Thank you, trustee. Bifurcation Committee, that report, we've received, let's see there. Bifurcation Committee will be meeting, next meeting will be on January 21st at 7:00 p.m. here at the Village Hall. Number two, orange, new committee, trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple items. The January order for Bifurcation Meeting will be canceled with the severe weather act, and the, the new recovery committee will be meeting on January 29th at 10:00 p.m. here at the building. Mr. Mayor, I would, at this time, present one of our new members, Marvell, Mrs. Marvell. She, with her expertise and her knowledge, I think she will be a really big help on the committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Is that time 10:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. New members here, right? Come on, raise your hand, so we know, there you are. Thank you very much, thanks for volunteering. All right, there are governmental relations to the trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, first of all, say happy New Year to everyone. And also, our next committee for the government will be the first Thursday of February, February the fifth here, at 7:00 p.m. And also, Mr. Mayor, since we, I wanted to put on the agenda for next committee meeting, which will be next week, I think we have it on there, but I don't know. You said it one time, you took it off, the cost-saving initiative, maybe we need to bring that back, yes, the initiative will be there before, I think we need to start talking about it.
No problem. Cost-saving initiative is on every, every meeting committee.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, we need to, just a thing to be brought up, especially meeting, we need to start addressing ASAP. And also, I will talk about it in miscellaneous, but I did, I am having a time on the same time that the Bifurcation Committee, so I guess they're not going to need to call about the, 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 the.
Problem, yeah, just. Oh, they're just in the back door open, they didn't have one of those conferences.
Okay, I'll talk about it at the miscellaneous, that's all.
All right. Move to Neighborhood Watch Committee, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all the committee members that came out in the brave, the cold and the snow last night. We had a great meeting, very well attended for the Neighborhood Watch last night. We've got two new black dog captains last night, so I can really credit them on that fact. Also, Neighborhood Watch Committee talked last night about some various projects we want to get involved with, we want to take on. I was able to talk a little bit with Chief Olivas informally about some things that we want to do to get his feedback on it, so we'll get a chance to talk about that and update the community on it a little bit later, but I think it's going to be very exciting for the Neighborhood Watch to assist the police with the project that we are interested in assisting them with this weekend. Our next meeting will be the second, to get on board and to attend. Thank you. Director Bush, how are you doing?
Thank you, trustee. Move to Public Relations, Community Outreach Partnership Committees, trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Relations Committee, meeting tomorrow, here at 4:30, which is a cheap time of our time, and I'll be here tomorrow at 4:30. As those clerks say, the SOCCO's are out in our possession. As far as the Committee Outreach Partnership Committee, that committee, they have canceled the meeting today, due to discussion meetings, I adore, I always schedule that, and nobody knows what's going to happen.
Thank you, trustee. Move to report to departments committees and commissions, Fire Department, Level One Commission, chief stuff, ready?
Thank you, Mayor, of course. For the past two weeks, hard to find responding to eighteen calls, eight vehicle accidents, one fire alarm, three medical accidents, one face blast on fire, smoke fire assist with three other times. As we all know, January started off with a bad cold spell. I want to give special thanks to all the residents, and looking out for their neighbors, there is cold spell. We had a fire department on standby when the wind chill down behind us third, the trees. This was not only for a quick response, but also to help make sure the station could be a warm and centering house. This came about with the rule of the mayor. If you had time, try to get those hydrants around your home, shut well, and make our job a whole lot easier. Our daddy life will put out words as soon as I have the center. As soon as I have the permission from the mayor for standby, long may the COVID centers. This will all depend on the weather. Also, I hope, I hope everybody had a great Christmas and a New Year's.
Thank you. If you would pass off, special thank you to all the employees that came out so we could have those warming centers. When we hit those weathers, those zero, fire station was a warming center from 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. There was all this cold weather, so we appreciate you coming out and making that call. Thank you. Move to Police Department, chief Olivas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, for calls for service, the time period from Sunday night through today, police responded to a total of 1,422 calls for service. Guess it was a little busy during holidays. We responded to 26 accidents, 120 burglaries, and of course, this is a summer, a summer spell, 127 animals assists, 36 burglar, burglar calls, six domestic, 163 other calls for service, 14 shots fired, 86 suspicious activity, and 244 traffic accidents. Also, for those of you that read SOCCO and seen some of the announcements, I have a Gmail, there is a police test that's upcoming, that the Fire Police Commission, of course, are bringing out. And last day to submit applications is the third of January, and the test will be on February 14th, and we have the advisory location at the passageway to the triple base. And applications are available for resource management associates located at Oak Park Avenue and Dillon Park. Those applications will be available through January 22nd. Also, I'd like to report that preliminary results are in for uniform crime reporting. From what I can tell, trying to make some comparisons with last year, it looks like about 20 or so more burglaries than we had last year. We're also up in one homicide, we had three homicides in 2014. And there was a, looks like a total of 88 domestic batteries also. We're doing very well, and certain crime, and others, we could use some improvement, so. Also, let me finish up very quick, that Casey Carter resigned earlier this morning, leaving us now with four communicators. Also, we have police officer Dave Nolchenko, who will be up till middle of February, in an off-duty accident, broke his foot, so that leaves us with seventeen officers on the street. And I was wondering, do we have, Mr. Mayor, or do you have a court number that can put this to you, do we have any insight as to when we're going to pay some of our vendors? So, I guess, because all our vendors are out.
Will we receive money from the state?
Thank you. Can you marry the word?
I think just as all the firm does, you know, we're pretty much on a freeze, we're suspended, so we received money from the state, so we're making sure that we make payroll. That's our main priority right now. All right, move to Public Force Department, director Ken Weller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some updates from the last report I did last month. Well, streetlights, 219 in January, 219 in Orioh, and we're still waiting on how to renew the connections, I'm not sure what happened, but we'll definitely call again. We have received some of the parks for our new streetlights, 510 of our photo cells, should be by the end of the month, we should just see some of the light heads start to come in, so we'll start to replace those in a few seconds. We are not, we're spending more money now on recurring old light heads now, a wasteful, so whatever program we do have, we'll use it up, up until we receive the light heads, and there may be some lights that will be off until the new heads go up. But they will hopefully take care of the library ones, or anything that's multiple light heads or all. Second item, we had some hydrants that we were working on, SOCCO, about Red Alphamar Collins, there are three over there now that are back in service. They were all damaged from accidents from the last year and a half. Accidents, as we know, they're all dying back in Saw Village, and we are going to cut them all down, good weather conditions, if they do help us out with it towards the end of the month, we will start to cut those streams down. If we do have snow conditions and cold conditions, and we will wait until that breaks a little bit. We're prepared, because we do have all of our vehicles up and running, as we do have aged vehicles, we do have to maintain them pretty periodically throughout the snow events, and after the snow events, but as it breaks down, we have all of our vehicles that are currently working. We also do have daily operations that we schedule, and when any emergencies will come about, whether it's a water main break, a snow event, or any Village events that come up, we do break away, and that does push behind, and we do the best we can to catch up. During the last week, we did have, during the snow event, we did have two streetlights poles that run down. I understand through the police department, we had one that was caught, one offender, and the other one was not. The more expensive one was caught, so hopefully they'll be able to take care of. But until we have some weather break, we will have to put the wood pole back in, that was on 223rd Street, and the other one, there are plenty of lights in the location, so we should be okay on that one until we have a break in the winter. West Watertown, last level here, we do have USL, which is the commissioning their equipment off the tower. They have one more item left at the site, which is the tent that sticks out of the top of the tower. They're currently making a hatch again to be put back on in location. Once they're done, they go with the rest of their equipment, and that will be it. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Move to Administrative Services Director, Mr. Shetinsty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things, Village Hall will be closed Monday, January 19th, to observe Martin Luther King Day. I've had a couple trustees inquire about Hometown Heroes electric sign. Hometown installed an electric sign, scroll sign without a permit, and they installed it. After I reviewed zoning code, the sign is prohibited, it's not allowed to see one this way. So, he has stopped the scrolling of it, and I think, you know, he wants the board to amend that ordinance, but that would be up to the board to do that. But I can only agree to what's in black and white when it's prohibited. I'll give you update on the training center that came to speak to you at the committee meeting. There's a couple of things. There's two zoning issues, they would have to appear in front of the zoning board for a tax amendment, and especially use, because the training facility is not, like, allowed, it's not in the zoning code. Currently, everything is on hold until she finds out who the owners of the pins are. The attorneys, one of the pins she gave us came back to face that are steel, so it's not Village own property. So, she's going to have to track down who the ownership of the property is, where they want to locate, before we can even move forward with it. So, that's where we're at with that. Wong's Beauty Supply has closed down next to Fairway. And for January 1st to December 30th of 2014, so we're at 1,732 tickets, equalling $224,475 in fines. Hopefully, with the debt recovery, if it's up and running, we get some of our money. But we're trying. That concludes my report.
Very.
Now, check, the sign at Hometown, could you inform him, because he has to come in for the zoning board first in order to petition for that?
It's not in law, the ordinance would have to be amended, there's nothing to do for the, the fireplace.
No, I'd rather just say this, he has petition to come before, that's a habit.
I suggested that he puts in writing a letter to the board, you know, and comes to talk to the board. I can't do anything. board. I can't do anything for him. He did install that without a permit, and I called him as soon as I seen it, and he admitted, you know, the fact that he should have checked with me first, and I just gave him a copy of the ordinance, so.
No, the reason why I was asking, just in order to, first of all, the zoning board has to recommend that it would be okay to put that sign there, or just can the board just go on here amending the ordinance?
Well, with it prohibited, it's not allowed, so I'm thinking if the, I really have to ask the village attorney, that the board, I would think if the board would want some of that kind of ordinance, they could do so, but probably have to go through the ordinance review, and then offer the board to vote. At this point, it's out of my hands.
Right. I just wondered, just it's steps we need to take, because it's just across the street from another road sign, that's all.
Well, that's a different zoning. And the C one is right nearby in the homes that are running behind it. I don't know what the reasoning was for it not to be allowed, but it's not.
Okay.
Trustee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you just display the letters from the overall?
An electric sign is prohibited. There's no displaying of it.
I know, I talked to him once, and I tried to explain to him, there's nothing I can do. I think he was looking for a special permission from the mayor. There's nothing as a mayor that I can do. So I actually pass, let it pass it over to the other committee, they can review it. But again, I know it's standing across the street, but Walgreens is, but Walgreens came in under the zoning, and there was a whole entire zoning package for Walgreens came in, so.
Yeah, that little strip from the bank to the bar levels, that's all C one, and it's just a different zoning. Like Walgreens, they have the C two. They have different, a lot of uses go around that at the time.
I mean, I understand if the, if the ordinance was there for C two, I understand that, and it's just a matter of being across the street, and if you can't go before the, or on the review board, then bring it to the building as a whole, as a board as a whole, it's not, it's not that, it's just, you know.
Right. It's a small sign, as long as it keeps, I think it's ten seconds in between scrolling.
Correct.
It's fine. It's just that, I can only give him what's in writing.
It's just a matter of amending it, how you should, what you read this book, or put some amendment in there, I should be about.
All right. Move to South Metro Police Security Agency Director.
Thank you, Mayor Board. January first to January eight, I think, we responded to twelve calls, seven vehicle accidents, one fire alarm, one car fire, one assist other agency, one school fire, and one school patrol. I would ask that we put on the national general to discuss the Cook County initiative plan that I was working on last year, that has to be passed by some, that's knowledgeable for grant money. There are already disaster funding. We have to, we have to, we don't just, it's quite a, more to be offered from these funds.
So go to your head, if you have any additional questions. Question, where are we with board members, you know, training and testing, and are we helping?
I'll have to chat with Captain Silver, because, you know, we have, I have a chance with Captain Silver, who's rich, have a, who's a typical, he's got all the numbers covered.
Maybe next week when you come in here, you can also update the board, if there's anyone needs to take, and you get to show training. I hope we're able to do that. All right. Public Relations Commission, trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our vice president here, Commissioner Frank Williams, I'm going to ask him to come and give the report in regard to the upcoming event with the ministers in the in the village with this happening, with this postponed. I was trying to get our secretary, Steve Simpkins', attention to ask him and Commissioner Williams to let me know what's up. Our vice president, Commissioner Williams.
There's no report to, who's planning to do it in January. It's almost too close, so we're not going to be able to.
Okay.
So there's nothing we can do, not with your face.
Okay, it's been rescheduled from January the twenty-ninth to April. Okay, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. To senior committee, Representative Rollins, my strength.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the senior activities, including the cast with of this January senior meeting, have been curtailed due to the increase in weather. However, South Coast Blue Grass on Sunday and Silver Sleet on Tuesday morning continued as scheduled. Yesterday, the monthly movie The Queens went on as scheduled at the county public library. Our paper pack book change program continues to be very successful, thanks to all our book fair donors and participants. The Foodtown Senior Community Lunch tickets are on sale for the Aloba twenty fifteen and Wednesday, January twenty-first. Ticket deadline is tomorrow unless they're sold out. Other programs include basic line dance class, four-week session at eight dollars, Wednesday, Friday, cheer exercise, free vehicle assistance, blood pressure screening, the smart driving courses, health insurance assistance, especially Medicare Part D and a low-cost senior wheel transportation. Their number is seven oh eight seven five four eight two hundred. You need to call the Township Senior Department, seven oh eight seven five four nine four hundred, extension two four four for additional information and services. Jones Memorial Community Center's Golden Age meeting is on Wednesday, January twenty-fourth. Annual dues are five dollars for year twenty fifteen, plus five dollars for lunch. Social hours at ten AM and lunch served at eleven thirty AM. Just a reminder, we have many frauds and scams that are targeting our seniors daily. Calls, mailings, and emails, complaint beat from IRS, your bad credit card, and social security are not legitimate unless you initiate the call and not give out your personal information. Guard your Medicare ID by your credit card. Be sure to review your Medicare summary notice, the MSN for accuracy. Never, never give services, unknown courses, or let unknown person in your home. Just remember, bank, Medicare, social security, and IRS already have your personal information. The Senior Medical Control SMP model, protect, detect, report, protect yourself from Medicare errors, fraud, and abuse. Detect, learn to detect potential errors, fraud, and abuse, and record it. You suspect you've been targeted for errors, fraud, and abuse. Record it. You can call H option. Their toll free number is eight hundred six nine 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 oh four three, open number seven oh eight three eight three, oh two I A. The next senior committee meeting will be on Thursday, February twelfth, at five PM. Thank you. That settles my report.
Okay. Move to consent agenda, sorry, the items are concerned, please consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
I'd like to make a motion to remove item B, F, G, H, and J. And place the item in the middle.
I want to make a motion, just a second.
Let's make a motion to remove them.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor to move item to B, F, G, H, and J to do this.
And there will be items C, D, E, F, and G.
Okay. Okay, motion is there, second?
Second.
Is there? Any question or comments? Page number, go to your, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon. Myers. Poskett. Yes. Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
All right, so, carries. That's for any other concerns, issues, and that's for consent agenda as amended to be approved. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon. Myers. Poskett. Yes. Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Motion carries. Item number seven, your business. Under A, motion to approve accounts payable disbursements for December tenth, two thousand fourteen through January thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, is our motion to approve. The motion is there?
Second.
Motion second, any question or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I know that our financial director is not here, but we do have the money in general fund to pay the four sixty-two. Do you have the money to pay the four sixty-two?
I haven't made any difference, so I didn't get more money, paid it, and paid it right.
I was saying, you do have to make a place, so if you didn't have this.
Right, that's why we didn't pay anything else.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure.
All right. Any question or comments? Page number, go to your, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Poskett.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve ordinance of the Village Saw Village cooking oil comedies, although it's supporting the renewal of a class eight real estate tax assessment classification for two one seven zero zero, South Mark Allen's Drive, sorry, motion to approve.
Oh.
Yeah, motion is there, second.
Second.
Motion second, any question or comments? Page number, go to your, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Poskett.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Motion carries. Item seventeen, motion to approve regular board meeting minutes for November twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen. Is there a motion to approve? Motion is there, second.
Second.
Any question or comments? Page number, go to your, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon. Myers. Poskett.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Motion carries. Item seventeen, D, motion to approve special meeting minutes of December thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Is there a motion to approve? Motion second, any question or comments? Page number, go to your, please call.
Burgess.
December thirty, two thousand fourteen.
Trying to find it.
Special meeting December thirtieth.
Okay, no, I'm saying, I didn't get those, I had, I guess.
There were several sets of minutes, so.
Right.
Is there any? Do you want to see my?
You're talking about December thirtieth, right?
Special meeting, that was December thirtieth. Special meeting.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, I didn't get those.
You were saying the summer required to the minutes make down, and then you were saying the
You can go, you can go on up if you want.
Okay, Gordon.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Poskett.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Page number, which is?
Yes.
Okay. All right, move to seven E, motion to approve special meeting hearing minutes of January seventh, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve? Motion is there, second?
Second.
Second.
Second. All right. All right, you have motion second, go to your, oh, any question or comments?
This is January seventh, correct?
That's correct. Special.
You'll notice in the roll call that trustee Myers is going to be absent as a roll call because of the specific in here. So I'm going to call the roll with absent trustee Myers. Okay, so there's Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Poskett.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
And motion carries. Seven F, motion to approve and hold executive session minutes for November twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen. Is there a motion to approve? All right, motion second, any question or comments? Page number, go to your, please call.
Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Stay.
Myers.
Yes.
Poskett.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
Motion carries. And item seven G, motion to approve and hold executive session minutes of January seventh, two thousand fifteen. Is there a motion to approve? Motion is there, second. Go ahead. And motion second, go to your, please call.
Again, you'll notice the trustee Myers will have to call the roll because there was a petition in the hearing, and that would be Burgess.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Poskett.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams. Yes.
All right, motion carries. Move to eight, just need your comments from the mayor board trustees, several trustee members. Trustee Mayor. Trustee Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, as your way, happy new year. From the Illinois, our, from the South River Transportation Council, Transportation Council, the, I have a couple things to report. I dot, when it comes to local roads to the village, but I know it's not Saw Village, but from Burnham, from Burnham to the Indiana State Line, which is a new road construction project. We have a start date from June twenty sixteen. Another report from I dot from Illinois three ninety-four, Saw Trail. We have two projects here. One is the turning lanes that are going to be done. We have a letting date of January thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. The second project, same location, the emergency vehicle, emergency vehicle prevention, those are the strobe lights that basically are the lights that bring the vehicles. We have a target letting date for December nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. Again, these are two different projects, but from my understanding, they're waiting from the one, so they can kind of put them all together. Another one is Saw Village here. We have Saw Trail of Mark Collins Drive. They're going to be doing a traffic signal, unfortunately, we have no target letting date on that project. From the Cook County Highway Department, draw a road from, let's see, Torrance Avenue to Burnham. We have no letting date on that as well. And to report from our Metro Electric District line, the Flossmore Station is going to be finished in April twenty fifteen, and a side note, the Metro Electric District that is out here is down two percent from this year. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Trustee Poskett. Trustee Washington.
Second, Mr. Mayor. No report.
Trustee.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate the town hall meeting, which will be held next Wednesday, January twenty-first, here at the Village Hall from seven to eight thirty. All residents are invited to attend, and the meeting is open forum. So please bring your comments, questions, and concerns. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. In closing, just like I reminded everyone, with the weather, we had, we had a pretty mild December. We came into December with some snow and ice, so be careful when you're driving, and also be careful when you're walking, so. I've got a call, a complaint about the ice on the roads for other quarters out there, and I think Kevin Craig talked about it more than I can, but with the temperature, we can certainly agree, that it's very difficult for that saw to to activate. And we saw some pretty cold weather and some stream below zero temperatures, so we tried to clear streets today, so some of the streets are looking pretty good. So the public force, that fantastic job, very no snow, snow we had in the ice, so you can very much pass around to the employees, obviously, but. All right. Did I said, I asked for motion to adjourn? Motion second. Yeah, second, on favor, say that.